Good afternoon and welcome to the January 23 meeting of the Glendale City Council. May we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Agajanian, Devine.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
Sinanian.
Here.
Mayor Garpetian.
Here.
Flag salute is...
Yes.
Councilmember Sinanian.
Thank you. Please put your hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for tonight's invocation. As our council convenes for this evening, let us pray for prosperity, hope and success for all stakeholders of our city. We pray for all of our leaders. We pray for their good health. May their critical decisions be made with wisdom tonight as they are always. Each day may we conduct ourselves in a manner that reflects the values and moral character of our outstanding city and the laws that govern the great nation. We ask all of this in your name. Amen.
Amen. May we have your report, please?
The agenda for the January 23 regular meeting of the Glendale City Council was posted on Friday, January 19, 2018, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
And what's next?
Presentation and appointments, 3-8, agenda preview for the meeting of Tuesday, January 30, 2018.
Mr. Takalian.
Evening, Mayor Garpetian, members of the council. Next week's afternoon meetings will start with the Glendale Housing Authority with one item, and that's going to be a report from Community Development Director regarding proposal to adopt the draft replacement housing plan for the housing authority-owned land at Fifth and Sonora. That meeting will be followed by a joint council and housing authority meeting with one item regarding authorization to study inclusionary housing and a housing impact fee. Also in the afternoon, we'll have a special meeting of the city council. Director of Library, Arts and Culture will provide a report on the Public Arts Master Plan. Finally, in the evening during council, there's only one item under consent. That'll be a report from Public Works and Community Development regarding amending the current agreement with Clean Air Energy related to the Beeline Maintenance Facility project. Under adoption ordinances would be a report amending sections of Title 30 of the Glendale Municipal Code related to establishing standards for accessory dwelling units. And under action items, the first item is a report from Police Chief and Public Works Director regarding Police Department's Museum. 8B is a report from City Attorney and City Clerk calling for a special election on June 5, 2018, for a ballot measure that amends city's charter to be consistent with SB 415. At 8C is a report from Community Development regarding appointment of a new tenant commissioner to the Glendale Housing Authority. And the final item is a report from Community Development regarding Downtown Glendale Association's calendar year 2017 annual report and calendar year 2018 budget for the Downtown Glendale Community Benefits District.
Thank you, Mr. Takalian. And what's next, please?
For would be consent items. The following are routine and may be acted upon by one motion. Any member of the council or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such requests before motion is approved.
Okay. Comments? Motion?
I'll move the consent calendar.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Agajanian, Devine.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Sinanian.
Yes.
Mayor Garpetian.
Yes.
Next item, please.
Next item would be city council and staff comments.
Comments? Councilmember Devine.
All righty. It was a busy weekend and a very fun weekend around the city. First of all, I want to thank all of our residents who participated in the Central Park Outreach Meetings. These were held in order to get an idea of what the residents would like to have in the Central Park. It seems that the responses were positive and a lot of good suggestions, so staff will be compiling all of those and hopefully we'll have, as a result, a fantastic park for our entire city in the near future. Second, I want to congratulate Horace Mann Elementary School for winning the One Glendale Volleyball Championship, and I want to send out kudos to our Parks and Recreation Department that puts on this program with our elementary schools. We have eight schools, started with four, now we have eight participating in the games. And it was, it's just marvelous to see the kids having so much fun, learning about teamwork, life skills, diet, and just becoming better, better little people. And finally, the highlight of the whole weekend was the kind of opening of the Japanese Tea House garden. We had 12 landscape and gardeners from Japan here for the week, and they did some work at the garden, making it more authentic. They put in a new waterfall and a new garden on the side. It is spectacular. Please, I urge you to go and visit the tea garden, the tea house and the garden. I want to give a shout out to Chris Peplo and his staff for their outstanding work. They worked night and day. They started at like 5:00 in the morning until 5:00 in the evening or later, working on this project. So it's really quite spectacular, and I hope everybody will go to the Brand Library, Japanese Tea House, and see that, the new structures there. Quite beautiful. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Devine. Comments?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Also want to commend our Parks Staff and the Japanese consulate for the tremendous work they've done with the tea house and the surrounding garden that's there. They brought, as you know, they brought specialists from Japan just for that purpose and for the purpose of the grand reopening of the tea house. They had a cultural sensei, a master of ceremonies, perform a Japanese ceremony called the no. And it was truly beautiful and a good turnout. And the mayor and I also had the privilege of enjoying a Japanese, a tea ceremony at the end of the event. So again, I encourage everyone to go and visit our tea garden, our tea house. It's really remarkable, beautiful, and I posted on social media saying most Glendale residents don't know about its existence, but it's there and it's gorgeous. Central Park, the community forums were very well attended, which is always a good sign. It seems like there's a lot of positive energy and a lot of sort of optimistic outlook on the design that's being proposed. Thank you, everyone, for coming. Most importantly, thank you for our staff for preparing a good report and a good event, which allowed for everyone to have their views heard. And yesterday, the mayor and my colleague, councilmember Devine, attended and hosted a delegation from the Korean city of Asean. And it was an interesting visit because they had eight councilmembers and all of their department heads. It's probably the biggest delegation from Korea that we've hosted. And they were here to learn from us about how we do, you know, how we conduct business in Glendale, how do we treat housing, how do we treat transportation and also development. And we told them honestly that when it comes to transportation, for sure, we have much more to learn from them than they have from us. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Sinanian. Councilmember Akarian?
I experienced firsthand this weekend the effects of the current flu epidemic hitting the community, and it is very serious. It is a flu which is not addressed and immunized by the current flu shot, the H1N3 flu vaccine which is given out. So if anyone feels the onset of a flu, believe me, it is a very tough flu going around. And I thought I'm a pretty tough guy after working with my colleagues for a few years, but I was dead flat for about 36 hours, just with extreme body pain. Not so much nausea or anything, but just extreme body pain and headaches. So if you find yourself feeling the onset of these symptoms, please go to an urgent care and get help immediately, especially if you have other medical issues or are of an advanced age or a young age for young children. Please, parents, take care of your seniors and your young children. On Monday, this coming Monday, I'm holding my quarterly North County Cities Transportation Summit at Burbank at 11:00. I invite my members of council, whether it be in your role as Eco Rapid, Bob Hope Airport, Arroyo Verdugo.
SCAG.
SCAG, whichever role you want to wear as you come in. It's at 11:00 at Burbank. It's basically a summary of the transportation activities going on in this region. Rubik attends, staff attends usually, and it will have reports from High Speed Rail, from Metro, from Metro Link, from Caltrans. Who else do we hear from? We have got a state and federal affairs update as it relates to transportation, so please, Metro as well, so please join me in that meeting, 11:00 Monday at the Burbank, they call it the Civil, what's it called, the Community Services Room? Not the City Hall, but what's the official name for it? It's the Community Services Building, Room 104, Third Street in Burbank. And that's all. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. Since we're on the issue of transportation, I'd be remiss not to mention that on Friday, the leadership and Executive Director of Eco Rapid Transit hosted the General Director of Japanese External Trade Organization, which is sort of like the equivalent of the US Trade Representative. And Jetro, as it's called in short, was the entity that hosted Eco Rapid Transit's leadership in Japan earlier in May. While Mr. Inaba had visited Southern California, really, the member cities of Eco Rapid Transit, well, his only purpose for the trip was to come and see us because as Eco Rapid Transit is gathering momentum and it's one of the Mezuram-funded projects, many foreign entities are increasingly interested in being involved with the project. So it's a very encouraging sign, and I think with all of us working towards bringing more mass transit to Glendale, in particular in the region in general, we're going to have some very good events happening in Southern California that's going to alleviate this horrible, horrible traffic that we're all dealing with. That's it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Akarian. Well, I also attended all of the meetings that were mentioned here, the events that was mentioned here by my colleagues. I want to thank our staff at Parks and every other department that worked really hard to put all of these events together. Japanese Tea Garden, it's a, the tea ceremony is very interesting, has a lot of meaning behind it, but you have to be able to sit on your knees for maybe half an hour because after, sitting is one thing, getting up is another thing. So it was very interesting, the tea was very delicious, we enjoyed that ceremony. That was my second time attending that event. I also went to Sacramento on the League of California Cities General Meeting. This was the first general meeting in Sacramento in 2018. I'm part of the Transportation Commission, but before that, they gave us an update on the upcoming budget, and we need to really, truly closely follow the budget that's coming up because there's legislation out there to even tax the drinking water. So be on the lookout. There's not, yes, it's called a drinking water fee. That's a new way of raising funds. So we have to be very careful and see where do they go and, you know, voice our opinion and at least defeat that proposition.
The air tax is next.
The air tax and breathing rights and everything else. With that, at the interest of time, I'm going to stop here, and what is next? Oh, I have, what's next?
We do have library card there.
Yes. Kaylee Cannon, followed by Anahito Shakan.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council Members. I'm here this evening to invite you to the opening reception of our new gallery exhibit. It's called Garden Variety, and it opens on this Saturday, June 27, from 6:00 to 9:00 PM. A garden is a physical and physicalized manifestation of time, and it is space to be planned and maintained, to determine suitability to a climate and to monitor long term. A garden is a shared space for both expert and beginner. Much like a garden, contemporary art practices engage timekeeping in dynamic ways. Time manifests in both natural and highly-produced ways, such as through our understanding of daylight and shadows as the passage of time and data visualizations on our mobile devices. The exhibit Garden Variety brings together the work of 13 artists whose work explores systems and experiences that encapsulate these notions of timekeeping and relationships between the built and natural environment. The exhibition focuses on image-based works that engage the history of photographic production, sculptural works, installations through accumulation and architecture. The artists of Garden Variety utilize reflection, shadow, found objects, Xeroxed images and mark-making, raising questions about material manipulation, productivity, rhythm and cycles, and longevity. So I brought postcards with me with additional information about the exhibit. It will be on view at Brand Library and Art Center, January 27 through March 16. So I hope you'll be able to join us for the opening. The reception is free, open to the public, and all the artists will be in attendance. Thank you.
Thank you. Anahit, Shakan?
Good evening, Mayor Garpetian, councilmembers, staff. Thank you so much for having me. I'm here as a co-curator of Reflect Space at the Glendale Library Arts and Culture, the newly renovated library with a fabulous new gallery called Reflect Space. We just had a great closing reception for our past exhibit, which was I Am: Narratives of the Holocaust. And on Sunday, Mayor Garpetian was present. Thank you so much for coming, with Dr. Garpetian from the Glendale School Board. We had Holocaust survivors and descendants of the Armenian genocide coming together to bake and braid and break challah bread and choreg, which is a very similar Armenian challah-like bread. It was a smashing success. Everybody walked away extremely encouraged and happy to have participated in the event. We have similar programming associated with our upcoming exhibit, which I'm really thrilled to tell you about, and that is called Invisible. And Invisible is negotiating the Mexico-US border. In the gallery space, we've actually built a border that mirrors the exact border between San Diego and Mexico-Tijuana. We also have great installation artists. We have photographs, images, we have a virtual reality component to this exhibit as well. The opening reception is on Sunday, and I encourage everyone to attend. For those of you who haven't seen it, I think you'll get a really good treat, Sunday, January 28, from 4:00 to 6:00. And we have an artist talk with Ms. De La Torre, Teresita De La Torre, at 5:00. The exhibit is free and open to the public all hours. The library is open, and the exhibit is until March 14, 2018. We'd really like to have your participation and presence. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Thank you. Yes.
If I may comment, I want to just say that Anahid and Ara Oshagon are doing such a fantastic job at the library in this space, bringing meaningful, thoughtful, creative and inspiring exhibits to our library. So please, stop in, not only just to see the library, but see their exhibitions because they're fantastic. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, before you go to public comments, if I could make a quick announcement. Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, as you know, we had initially scheduled to have the Grayson Repower Status Update this evening. This conversation initially started December 19 of 2017, where council gave us direction to bring back a report as it relates to a status update on Grayson. That was supposed to be this evening. As you can see, we are short one council member, unfortunately, and he is due to be back, hopefully next week. Hence, we rescheduled the Grayson Repower Status Update to February 6 so that we would have a full council to have the opportunity to hear what the staff has to say as well as the community. We did contact Mr. Dan Brotman and made sure to highly publicize the date change to make sure that those who had planned to come this evening were notified. We did the best that we could, but just wanted to make an announcement before we get into the meat of the agenda this evening.
Thank you.
Just to add to that, I asked for that hearing and let there be no doubt that the continuance is...
So just want to make sure that there be no doubt that the continuance is at the request of Councilmember Agajanian and out of respect for him. And, you know, that's why it's going to be held on the 6th of February, no other reason.
Just to add to that, unfortunately, that's not what it was advertised out there when they sent the notices out, and they really came up with their own ideas as to why this meeting was continued. And, you know, I just want to put that out there, that was not the right thing to do.
So what's next, please?
Next would be six community event announcements for three minutes.
Saro Kerkonian, followed by Susanna Liberty, followed by Violet C.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor Garpetian, councilmembers Devine, Sinanian and Najarian. I'm here on behalf of the Armenian Bar Association to inform the Glendale community about an upcoming event on February 3, 2018, where the Armenian Bar Association, in partnership with the Southwestern University Armenian Law Students Association, were having a free legal clinic and workshop for members of the community who have misdemeanors on their record or low-level felonies that can be converted to misdemeanors under Proposition 47. They can petition to court to have these removed from their record so that they can get a fresh start if they've complied with all the requirements of the court. They can have a fresh start and have a new life, to get housing, to get a job, to get other benefits that they would otherwise be precluded from having. And so it's on February 3 at the Adult Recreation Center at 201 East Colorado. It's free, there's no charge, it's a pro bono event, and there's a procedure that the participants have to follow. If they can call our, the office number 818-937-3152, or email at the armenianclinic@gmail.com. We'll give them all the details, and this is a, could be a valuable benefit for members of the community who might not otherwise be able to afford to do the petition. And so I thank the council for their time, and we look forward to the community's participation. Thank you.
Thank you. Susanna Liberty, followed by Violet.
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, I really appreciate this opportunity to speak to you today. I am going to speak about the Grayson expansion. That was what I expected to do today, but I'll be back on February 6. I would just like to tell you that I oppose the expansion for a number of reasons. The pollution that is anticipated to be generated by this expansion will, I believe, very badly affect my family. We live pretty close to the plant, but even if we live several miles away, I think we would be affected. We have a four-year-old child in the house, and I've just been recently diagnosed with a lesion on my lung, and, you know, I have great concern about that. Another reason would be that the plant, apparently by law, is going to be obsolete in a few years, and I don't see any reason putting a lot of money into something that we're going to be prohibited from using in a few years. There is no longer a market, I understand, for Glendale to sell its excess electricity. Apparently, other towns and cities have built plants that are creating extra electricity, and they are unable to sell their product. And so I don't see any reason why we would build a plant that would do that. And finally, I'd like to say that we have ample renewable energy sources today, and even though money has been put into studying this plant, I think our money would be better used to develop energy sources that do not use fossil fuel, but use solar and other types of renewable forces. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Violet Sacre. I live in Glendale. This is my son, Ilu, Ilhan. I know today you won't be voting on the Grayson issue, however, I am in my third trimester of pregnancy, so I don't know if I'll be here the next one. It's very important for me today to just speak to you about the Grayson expansion. It's something that's very close to my heart because I have a family, and I really appreciate Glendale. I made it my home in the past 11 years because I really feel like it's a family-friendly, very progressive city in a lot of ways. So I was really shocked when I heard that we didn't really consider a lot of renewable options when we were deciding to expand and upgrade our plant. So I just want to mention that I'm opposed to the expansion in its current form, and I really, really urge you to try and consider, you know, some renewable options, some green technology. There's a lot out there these days. I really would love to see Glendale become a pioneer and an example of a city. I feel like it's really important for us to lead the way into the future. We have children, we have families, all of us. I think it's very important for us to consider clean air for all. Please, thank you. Do you want to say something? No? He wants to say, please give us some clean air. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks for being here. That is my last card. What's next on the agenda, please?
Next would be action items. 8, 8A, interim chief of police regarding request to dispense with competitive bidding and authorize to enter into a three-year agreement with enforcement aviation services for avionics maintenance services and repairs to joint A support unit helicopters. 8A1, resolution to dispensing with competitive bidding and authorizing to enter into a three-year agreement for not to exceed amount of $100,000.
Ms. Beer's?
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, as was read into the record, we're asking for dispensing with competitive bidding and having a three-year agreement for our aviation services for maintenance services, basically for our helicopters. This $100,000 would be divided between the city of Glendale and Burbank should we utilize the funds, if necessary, for maintenance of our helicopters. If you have specific questions, interim police chief Carl Pulvalitis is here to answer any questions you may have.
Chief?
Good evening, Carl Pulvalitis, interim police chief. Interim city manager Beer's covered the subject quite well, as I said, what we are asking. Helicopter maintenance is obviously near and dear to our heart and to any of our pilots' hearts, anybody who works in aviation. We have one mechanic that we split between the city of Glendale and Burbank that does our primary maintenance. This contract is supplementary to that, to provide additional maintenance when our mechanic's on vacation, out of service, or he needs an extra pair of hands. We have used this mechanic before. He has a high level of expertise. He was the director of maintenance for the city of Anaheim's Police Department. He knows our helicopters very well. As I said, the costs are split. The cost, the money is only spent if we need the services. Over the last few years, we've actually only used $50,000 of the services, so we're asking for to dispense with competitive bidding, enter a contract with them for three years to not exceed $100,000.
Any questions? Thank you, chief. Is there a motion?
I'll move the item.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Agajanian, Devine.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Sinanian.
Yes.
Mayor Garpetian.
Yes. What's next, please?
Next would be 12 oral communications. Discussion is limited to items not a part of this agenda. Each speaker is allowed five minutes. Council may question or respond to the speaker, but there will be no debate or decision. The city manager may refer the matter to the appropriate department for investigation and report. As of now, we have 20 cards, man.
Is anybody else would like to speak on this item? On oral communication, please fill out a card because I'd like to know how many speakers do we have, and I can, I have to just readjust the time based on the number of speakers.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, I am Glenn Webb, 1670 Arbolas Drive in Glendale. I'm a scientist and engineer, and it's my opinion that the Glendale Grayson Repowering Project is simply on the wrong course. I submitted a letter to the city council yesterday regarding the project, and I hope you've had a chance to read it. I won't be able to speak to all of the points in my letter in this brief time. This project has advanced to a very late stage without a clear set of goals and requirements which have to be set by the city council and consult with the people of Glendale. Our goal is a clean energy future, but the council did not set that as a goal for Grayson and the GWP. If we are to undertake a major energy product in Glendale, project in Glendale and spend 500 million-plus dollars, then that project must provide a path toward our ultimate goal, which is a zero-carbon future. The only apparent requirement placed on this project so far is to replace some aging gas-fired generators with some new gas-fired generators. I suggest the council take the lead here and establish a set of requirements for which GWP can then make a plan and proceed. I propose the following set of requirements. Number one, provide ultra-reliable electric power to the city of Glendale, which this plan probably meets. Two, meet the 50% renewables state mandated requirement by 2030, which questionably we meet. Number three, provide a plan for 90% renewables by 2045. 100% by 2045 is under consideration by the state legislature and does have a chance of passing in the next few years. Four, maximize the distributed solar installations of residential and commercial properties by renewing, increasing, and fully funding the solar initiatives program in Glendale at $1.25 a watt. Number five, encourage solar installations with battery backup by incentivizing these systems at $2.50 a watt. Number six, redevelop the entire 26 acres of Grayson as a facility for the next century, an office park with private participation, maximum solar generation of 5 to 10 megawatts, a major battery backup facility of 1 to 2 acres, a modern gas turbine facility of 75 to 100 megawatts, which should be quite sufficient to meet our long-term needs. Seven, implement a true smart grid with smart circuit breakers that allows GWP to control not only the sources of energy, but all residential and commercial loads in case of emergencies, and to provide a stable, GWP-controlled grid operation under all conditions. Number eight, maximize the purchase of surplus power from new gas-fired plants which are operating at 50% or less capacity in the state. Take advantage of California's massive glut of generation capability to save Glendale ratepayers money. These thoughts represent just a brief look by one individual, that's me, at the project. I'm sure there are others that can offer better ideas than mine, but these things are certain. Number one, Grayson Repowering will not reduce our dependence on burning fossil fuels. Number two, Grayson Repowering will not result in lower energy costs for GWP customers. Number three, Glendale citizens will be on the hook for $500 million-plus, that's $6,500 per Glendale household, of bond repayment plus interest, irrespective of the economic viability of the new Grayson plant. Number four, Glendale ratepayers will be on the hook for additional costs of cap-and-trade payments to the state as a result of our additional greenhouse gas emissions. And number five, and most important, Glendale Repowering will not move us toward a zero-carbon energy economy. There is 1,000 times the amount of solar energy incident on this planet than the entire planet's energy use currently, 1,000 times. Let's get with it. Let's take the lead. Let's take our time, and let's do it right. We can do better in Glendale Repowering. Studies are needed, independent of GWP. And last, I'm available to meet with anyone to discuss my letter to you or any other matters related to this, Glendale's Clean Energy Future. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, just a question. Hi, Mr. Webb, how are you?
I'm fine.
Did you say in your plan there up to 100 megawatts of generation capacity?
I've taken a brief look at it, and it looks to me like with all, if we do all these other things, that 75 to 100 megawatts is more than adequate as a base loading for a modern turbine facility here.
So you're not advocating 100% renewable?
I am not advocating that we not put in any gas-fired turbine. I'm not advocating that we totally scrap gas-fired turbines.
So you're advocating up to 100 with all those other items that you listed?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a question. Glenn, did you give us a copy of your letter?
I sent the letter, I gave it to the clerk yesterday with copies for all the council members and the clerk.
Oh, okay, then I have a copy. Okay.
Next speaker is, thank you, sir.
Yes.
Bert Calver. Okay, I'm going to ask you all to please refrain from clapping or making noises because we have a meeting to run. I have 28 speakers. Just as a respect to this size, to these council members, please refrain from clapping. Is Mr. Calver here, Bert Calver? Shogri Votoyan, followed by Michael Beck.
So, from Broadway to San Fernando, there's a route served by Metro, and it's served by 90 and 91 bus?
I would like to find out if there is a possibility to make the B Line Bus go to San Fernando because B Line most of the time is empty. Route number 32 is most of the time is empty.
So, B Line and the other buses, most of the time they come at the same time. Is there a possibility to change the timeframe between the routes?
So, we lived in Glendale for 10 years now, and we never had the chance to fill up an application for senior building.
Is there a possibility for the city to post the announcements about the applications inside the city hall or advertise inside the city hall?
So, the fountains, Americana, so they have a lot of different, so they have a lot of different, they operate under a lot of different sounds. Is there a possibility to put one of the Aram Hachatrians songs in Americana like it's in Las Vegas?
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. She asked for the masquerade specifically. Michael Beck, followed by Lynn Foster.
Well, I couldn't possibly summarize as well as Ron Brotman did about this Grayson expansion, so I decided to just give a personal reaction. I'm a 32-and-a-half-year ratepayer of Glendale Water and Power here in Glendale, and I am absolutely heartsick that this 700 and, excuse me, $7.5 million has already gone in to this incredible fossil fuel project when we are already terribly suffering from global warming. Global warming is alive and here and now, and it's already really badly affected my life personally, and here we have this plan that can't possibly be carried through because it's going to, as Ron pointed out, cost us a hell of a lot of money because fossil fuels need to stay in the ground, not be burned even more than they are now. So I'm feeling, as a Glendale citizen, completely blindsided by this plan, which apparently has been years in preparation, but you know, we citizens have not heard a damn thing about it until very recently, and I am just hoping that the city council can rectify this awful situation because, I mean, sure, $7.5 million have already been spent, but we're looking at 100 times that in terms of the final completion costs. So, but my big thing I want to leave with you tonight is, if you like global warming, you'll love the Grayson Expansion.
Thank you. Lynn Foster, followed by Andrew Allison.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. I'm just here to lend my voice also to my opposition to the Grayson Repowering Plant and to encourage Mr. Sinanian's idea of a halt and further study. I'd love to see Glendale be a model for the future and not a reflection of the past. At our house, we're almost 100% solar-powered, it's wonderful. Not that you can 100% solar-power the city right now, but you can certainly start in that direction, so we'll meet the state's standards. 2030, amazingly, is not all that far away. By the time the plant is built, it'll be a lot closer. So I just wanted you to know that there are a lot of us, as you can see, who are very, very concerned about this, and we hope that you'll take the time to just step back, maybe hire some other experts who have no conflict of interest and who are independent and who are energy, are renewable energy conscious, to do a further study and see if there's a modification that can be made to make us a little greener. Thank you.
Thank you. Andrew Allison, followed by James Stubben, followed by Gregory Patton.
Yes, hello, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. I'd like to join the increasing chorus of Glendale citizens here who would like to see the Grayson Power Plant extension put on the shelf for now. I'll just echo some of the points that we need to, as a city, need to hire independent consultants who don't have conflicts of interest to determine Glendale's true power needs, put together a plan how to meet those needs with clean alternatives. We need to insist on a citizen oversight committee of this effort to make sure the analysis is conducted with our interest at heart and not those of the GWP management. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Greg Patton. George Patton, I'm sorry. George Patton, followed by Hawk. There's no last name.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and councilpeople. I don't look like a canary, but I kind of feel like I'm a canary in the coal mine because even though when I went to college I was an incredible track star, I'm no longer even close to that. I'm 75 years old, I'm still doing gardening, I have a lot of energy, but I have lung and breathing issues, and to me, the Grayson Expansion only exacerbates those breathing issues that I have, and I'm kind of like the poster child of many of the people in Glendale. I live in La Crecente, by the way. Even though I'm in La Crecente, and even though Grayson is over here, think about the forest fires that we just had. Think about how far those particulates spread, and you'll realize that Grayson, even though we can't see the fog produced, some people call it smog, you can't see the fog that's produced by the plant, those very fine particulates are very dangerous because many scientists and doctors have said, when those really tiny particles get into your lung tissue, they don't go away. Other materials that get in firefighters' lungs can sometimes be cleared out. So I just wanted to bring up these points because I think most other points that I wanted to address have already been addressed by other people, and so thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for being here. I believe I, I'm afraid I skipped Mr. James Stubben, followed by Hawk, followed by Scott Peir.
Good evening, members of the city council, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for hearing my comments this evening. I'm here to support the proposal to pause Grayson and hire an independent consultant to study clean energy alternatives. As a steward of the city, I think the facts and evidence should guide every decision you guys make. Don't rely on populism. I think we've had enough of that this year. Let's examine those facts for a minute, though. We know that global warming is caused by burning fossil fuels, yet we signed the Paris Agreement and made a commitment to cutting emissions. Now, the current plan for Grayson increases air pollutants and greenhouse gases, greenhouse gas emissions substantially, and we knew that, and we know that from the EIR, and despite whatever they think offsets are going to do. So I ask you, is the city's need for affordable and clean energy, reliable electricity incompatible with our city's commitment to reduce emissions? Well, that certainly seems to be the story from the consultants. PACE came up with the original plan, STANTEC conducted the EIR that claims to have studied alternatives, including clean energy, and found them both to be non-viable due to cost and feasibility. But who are STANTEC and PACE? STANTEC, who conducted, STANTEC is the general contractor of the project, or part of the general contractor on the project to build this plant, and PACE is the parent company that's going to sell us the generator, PACE's parent company will sell us the generators. So both have strong disincentives to explore clean energy options under which, you know, which they would not likely benefit. Even Mr. Zern stated, started to acknowledge that the prices for storage have... Even Mr. Zern stated, started to acknowledge that the prices for storage have fallen considerably in the three years since his plan was originally conceived. Now, this acknowledgement only came after he saw members of city council express reservations. It certainly did not come up at the Power Commission hearing when the EIR was presented just three months ago. But let's just get past that for a moment. I'm submitting an article here today for you to read, and I hope you all read it. It's called "In Colorado: A Glimpse of Renewable Energy's Insanely Cheap Future." It cites Excel Energy's RFP request to repower over two gigawatts that were required to replace two retired coal plants. An all-source solicitation where developers were asked to submit bids to meet the needs, whatever, whatever means they felt could sustain that amount of energy. They got four-hundred-and-thirty bids, and that was two-hundred, that was this year, that was 2017. In 2013, they did a similar project, and they got fifty-five bids. So I think the revelation here, besides not just how many people want to provide clean energy, provide, can provide energy solutions, was how cheap this was, far lower than what industry experts had projected. And these were real-world bids. I just want to read one quote here. This was from the International Renewable Energy Agency, and it says, "Drawing on fifteen thousand data points from projects around the globe concludes that by 2020, two years from now, all renewable power generation technologies that are now in commercial use are expected to fall within the fossil fuel-fired cost range." I think that's a pretty powerful statement, and I think that's why Grayson and the expansion plan is a terrible investment. And when we talk about the costs, we're only thinking about the direct costs of this project. We don't, we're ignoring the health costs, the environmental impact of global warming. You can't quantify those. And, I mean, for no other reason, let's be honest, Grayson is sort of an eyesore. Nobody would be sad to see that leave our city's skyline. So I ask you again, please vote for the proposal to pause Grayson, have independent clean energy consultants study our options, and give us a proposal that meets our city's energy needs without polluting ourselves. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Hawk, followed by Scott Peir.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members, and thank you for the opportunity to speak to you. I live here in Glendale, over on Western Avenue. My son and my grandsons live just a few blocks from the proposed Grayson expansion. So I think this proposed expansion provides you, the city council, with a tremendous opportunity to ensure that our children, our grandchildren, our great-grandchildren will have clean air to breathe. All across the globe, citizens are suing their governments for not protecting them from the harmful effects of fossil fuel pollution. Over nine-hundred suits have been brought in twenty-four countries. In Oregon, the children's constitutional climate lawsuit against the federal government is on track to move forward. In 2015, plaintiffs in the Netherlands, South Africa, and Pakistan, as well as Massachusetts and Washington State, won similar human rights or constitutional cases that forced authorities to more aggressively cut carbon emissions. The city of Glendale can avoid expensive legal battles by assuring that Glendale Water and Power has a viable plan for getting all of its electricity from 100% clean renewable energy by 2035, beginning right now with the Grayson Power Plant expansion. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Scott, Scott Peir, followed by Bert Culver.
Hello, my name is Scott Peir, and I'm here to speak against the proposed expansion of the Grayson Power Plant. As an engineer with a degree in electrical engineering and a concern for our health and environment, I find the plan offensive. It was written by profiteers associated with Siemens who view Glendale as an easy mark and who want to rob us. Other cities are finding ways to convert to clean energy, but Glendale apparently is saying, no way, not for thirty years, choke on this. Are we supposed to accept a plan that belches filth into our air? Are we supposed to accept being part of the climate change problem instead of the solution? No way. The financials are awful. Unless you're the bank that the city's not talking about, that will be involved in the bond that will add three-hundred-million dollars to the price tag, we all know that the residents of the city will still be paying for this disaster long after it's mothballed. No one in twenty years from now will want dirty power that costs more than clean power. Reliability will be mediocre at best. Since the plant will go down in an earthquake, transmission lines go down in wind events, which we're going to have more of. The city's finances are not in conflict with reliable electricity, healthy people, and a clean environment. Here are things the city should do. One, install solar systems on microgrids on municipal buildings so that the next big earthquake disaster hits, there will be locations in the city where the lights are still on. Two, put a carbon tax on the ballot, similar to Boulder, Colorado, in which a tax on electricity is added to the utility bill. This would be a legal way to move funds from GWP to the general fund. Three, tax and regulate cannabis businesses in Glendale. Four, put a soda tax on the ballot modeled after the one in Berkeley that generates millions of dollars in revenue. Thank you.
Thank you. Bert Culver, followed by James Burkett.
Hello, council. My name is Bert Culver. First want to say my regret for, council member, I always screw up his name, Agajaniyan, and I wish him a rapid, speedy recovery. I'm here, of course, to talk about stopping Grayson. I'm just going to say what I think is new. L.A. City Council recently introduced, they're going to start a climate emergency commission, and I think Glendale should do that, too, start another commission for the climate change emergency that we're having, where then council could take advice from another commission on how to stay green and keep a green Glendale. Personally, I have a four-year-old daughter, we're shopping for elementary schools right now, and like tomorrow I'm going out to Mark Keppel, and I keep looking and I can see the Grayson Power Plant, you know, I'm on a map, really, but it's mostly, there's several elementary schools that are close to this plant, and if you're talking about increasing pollution, especially a particular matter which affects children, I don't want my kids to go to those schools. Unfortunately, some of the best schools are there within the range of the power plant, but that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. James Burkett, followed by Anita Oseb.
Hi. I'm a resident of Montrose, and I was born about thirty miles away from here in the worst month of the worst year on record for smog in Los Angeles, and I developed asthma, and I almost died several times as a child, until my parents got me out of the city. I have three siblings, none of them were born here, and none of them developed respiratory This plan, if it adds even 1% to the pollution here, is a huge step backwards. It's an embarrassment, and anybody in support of it should be ashamed. I know there's people who can make money off of this, but it would be at the expense of the families in this room, and I know from personal experience that the kids will suffer the most. Thank you.
Thank you. Anita Oseb, followed by Jennifer Pinkerton, followed by Leah Caprera.
Good evening. My name is Anita Oseb, and thank you for the opportunity. It's my first time here. I live in Glendale. I rented a studio apartment in Glendale in summer 2015, and it has been my first home in the United States. From the very beginning, I noticed headaches when I moved in. It's a very tiny studio apartment, and soon I discovered that the toilet was leaking, and the toilet floor was wet, and very, I could see dark spots like mold. So I reported it to the building manager. Nothing would happen straight away, it would take a long time until I threatened that I wouldn't pay rent if that problem is not fixed. So at that time, two handymen came and did a very quick fix, opened the floor while I was in the apartment, and the building is from 1946, and I assume there's asbestos in that building. So anyway, two months later, the stain came back, and I reported it to the building manager, and they would just send people and the workers, they were handymen, not specialized professionals, not certified, and they would say it's nothing. So anyway, I reported it to the code violation at the city, an inspector by the name Jerry Walton came and inspected it, and he told me that the city doesn't have any devices. So I have to hire a private company. But since I'm a student and a student worker, I could not afford it at that time, and I would speak to other tenants, and I found out there's mold in other apartments, and it has been there for a long time, many years. And one of the tenants who moved into that apartment at the age of one, who is about twenty-four years old now, he has developed cancer, and they have mold on the wall, in the bathroom, in the room. I mentioned going to the city, and I found a copy that that apartment had, reported it to the city, and they have carpet with big stains, with bugs and mold. And as far as I know, the building manager sent a painter who painted over the mold, and that's not the right way to treat mold. So anyway, finally, nothing came out of the inspection from the city. The building manager changed, and I contacted the new building manager. Finally, they changed the bathroom floor. I requested a certified mold specialist to come and inspect the apartment because there was also very musty smell, bad smell in the kitchen, coming from the kitchen cabinet and in the bathroom. So finally, the bathroom floor was fixed, and I was told that the only thing that the inspector found was a wet bathroom floor, the toilet was leaking for about two years. So my health issues continued. I developed wheezing and respiratory problem. I couldn't sleep at night, and I noticed I was becoming very forgetful. I am a student, I would study, and I wouldn't be able to remember what I studied, and that is not common for me. I have a high GPA, 3.8 at the city college, and suddenly I could not remember what I would study. So I went to the doctor, I saw a lung specialist, and I showed the doctor the pictures that I had taken from the mold in the apartment, and she said that I should move out. And I use two inhalers at the moment. So finally, I had no proof, so I borrowed some money, and I hired a private company to come over and inspect the apartment, and the report, in a way, was shocking. The mold is spread out all over the apartment, and it's mostly in the room and in the bathroom, the bathroom that was inspected by the building manager's request.
Thank you.
So.
Thank you very much. Your time is up. I still have another twenty, twenty speakers or eighteen speakers. You can leave your information, yeah, with our staff, and they will contact you and try to guide you through your issues. Next speaker is Jennifer Pinkerton, followed by Leah Caprera, followed by Caroline Oriha. Okay. I'm here, Leah Caprera.
Hi, good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of this council, councils of Glendale, yeah. I'm here tonight to talk a little bit about this expansion of Grayson that doesn't make any financial sense, any health or ecological sense. We have to see other alternatives for it. We have to stop this EIR and get another company to add to this with more green energies. I am proud to be a member of the solar energy, and every time I go to the conferences, I am, I am very, very pleased to see those people fighting, fighting for this energy that receives so little subsidies from the, from the federal government. We see, we know the power of the gas and oil industries, we know that. But I am very happy to be part of this other group who fight for a better world. So I think we should follow countries like Spain, Germany, Italy, Canada, Japan, South Korea, and many others who are already recycling their solar panels. They used them for twenty-five to thirty years. When you go to conferences, you see there, there is a market even for recycling these used solar panels. So what is happening to the U.S.? I know, I know, there is China, the pressure of China, China invested a hundred billion dollars in this, in this field a few years ago. It's another thing we have to fight, it's our competitor. But I think if we work together, analyzing the things and seeing that now we are going to pay, to import solar panels, we are going to pay higher taxes. So it's much better to invest in our own industry. It's a huge opportunity for GWP to have this in their hands and be a model for the whole country to change their direction. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Caroline Oriha, followed by Steve Colton. Steve? Followed by Steve Gorman. Two Staves in a row.
Good evening. Thank you for having this important meeting. My name is Steve Colton, resident of California all my life, and Glendale's thirty-seven years as a ratepayer here. And I was born in Burbank, raised in North Hollywood. My job, when I was a kid, was to take the trash out in the morning, put it in the incinerator, and light it, then get dressed, get on my bike, and ride two miles through smog, choking smog, to Walter Reed Junior High School. So we're going to build incinerators to generate power when we have solar options and clean energy options. Ron spoke very, very thoroughly as to why this is a very, very bad plan. I, I'm the project manager by profession, and it's inconceivable that a green energy independent advisor wasn't a part of that seven-and-a-half-million-dollar pie to examine alternatives. Obviously, there was, shall we say, a problem with what was presented. We need to turn away from the past, which has brought us to this crisis. It is a crisis, global warming. Global warming and climate change is a crisis, and we have to make the turn. It makes no sense to build more incinerators. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Steve Gorman, followed by Mike Thatcher.
Your Honor, Council. I'm not a politician. I'm not an engineer. I'm not a lawyer. I'm not an environmental activist. I'm just a concerned citizen, a Glendale resident, and a ratepayer. And I think I know a scam when I see one. I'm here to talk about the issue of public integrity and trust in government. People's trust in government starts here, local level. And I think it's an outrage that you all have commissioned a study by two companies that stand to gain, so financially, from this project, that you have the original plan for the rebuild drafted by late Pace Global, whose parent company is going to sell the gas turbines back to GWP. And the EIR is prepared by this company, Stanton. That's the general contractor of the project. I mean, this is just, this is right out of, I don't know, some, like, Dark Ages. It's just an outrage. And I don't think that, I understand that there's a revision of this plan that's coming back through the council. And I can tell you that the growing number of people who are, who feel as I do, who are outraged by this, who think this is just a despicable bit of corruption, are not going to be inclined to look favorably on any plan, revised or otherwise, that's not a truly independent study. I mean, for you all to bring this forward and, courtesy of the people who stand to gain financially from this, it's just the biggest conflict of interest you can imagine. And I can't believe you all are, actually believe that the citizens are going to accept this. I think it's just, it's an outrage. And you all should be ashamed of yourselves. And I hope that you, that, you know, better thinking will ultimately prevail. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mike Thatcher, followed by Dan.
Followed by Dan Brodmann. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council. I'm grateful I have this opportunity to speak with you on behalf of this, the Grayson Power Plant Expansion Plans. I'm a resident of Glendale. I have three small children. We live a couple miles from the Grayson plant. And this particular issue interests me on two levels. I'm obviously a Glendale resident, but I also work for a microgrid development company as an energy management specialist. And I also work for a local publication that features families in the North Glendale area. I think we've had some of you on the cover at one point or another, so I thank you for that. But a lot of dialogue is going to go back and forth. You're going to hear from experts. And I don't wish to add to that body of information. But the one perspective I would like to add to all of this is that when decisions of this magnitude are made, they're usually made in light of all the things that we do know or we think we know. And there's a lot of information that's passed around. And some of it is subjective, and some of it is pretty clear-cut. But there's always a, there's always an underlying aspect of the things that we don't know. And what I would like to share is, you know, I grew up in a time, just before they started implementing a lot more of the clean air initiatives. And so I remember as a kid, you know, going out and playing hard and all day long, you know, coming back at the end of the day and taking a deep breath in. And when I, and it was my little, like, you know, my little childhood litmus test for how bad the air was that day. Taking a deep breath, and when I got to a certain point, I'd cough. I'm like, oh, it was a five on a scale of 10. And other days, you know, I'd start that deep breath in, and it was even worse. The unknown, you know, we all, I compare that to the fact that, you know, we all are going to leave this earth at some point in one way or another. Now, there are many factors that contribute to that. And for many years, I have thought in the back of my mind, you know, how much of the influence of that dirty air that I inhaled as a child is going to contribute to when and how I, you know, I leave my family behind. And I certainly hope that it's extended for as long as I can. But as I look at my children, and as I think about the expansion plans, and having spent time, you know, the last three and a half years advocating for microgrids, both on the residential and commercial scale, knowing firsthand what they can do to mitigate demand on a large scale. There's always going to be a need for a power plant and for generation. But that need definitely needs to migrate to a backup power, too, you know. And I think the ultimate goal should be to have enough commercial and residential microgrids proliferated throughout the city that those peak days where we genuinely need a large power plant to provide, you know, emergency power, or, you know, in peak times for the entire city, we want to just, we want to crush those down. We want to limit those to, you know, five to 10 a year, five, you know, as few events as we possibly can. And so those incentives that, you know, a large portion of the money that we would put towards an expansion plan, putting that more and more towards these incentives. One particular case that I, a solar company that we have an MOU with, the Ariana Medical Center, just right on the border of Glendale on Verdigo Road. They specifically said that they went ahead with that project because there were, because of the initiatives, the rebates programs that were available. So I urge you to consider, you know, consider what we don't know. You know, we do know that it's unhealthy. There are studies that are done, but there's a lot that we don't know. And as we move on, you know, some of those things are going to come to light. But it's going to come to light too late. It's going to come to light how bad that air quality was for our children when they're, I have a two, a four, and a six-year-old. And, you know, I want them to be standing in my shoes someday and to be parents and to be, to be able to live as long as they can and spend as much time with their family as they can. So I urge you to consider that. And I thank you for all the work and effort that you put into this community. We will be leaving in the next two or three years as we're building a home outside of Glendale. I'll be sad to leave, but I appreciate your time. I appreciate your effort and the diligence with which you're looking at this, into this project.
Dan Brodmann, followed by Alec Bartosoff, followed by Karo Awanesian.
Hi, good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council members. You've heard me so much that I'm going to yield, if I can, to Mr. Yegparian, who came too late to put in a card. Is that all right?
Mr. Yegparian can fill out the card and speak on his own. I mean, if you have, if you'd like to...
He was too late, so I thought he just hasn't...
No, we still have time. I still have another 15 speakers to go. He can, he can fill out the card and speak.
You can speak, okay.
So you're not going to speak?
No, I'm going to pass.
Okay. Yeah, after you're done, you can fill out the card and give it to the City Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I'm here to talk on the same Grayson topic. I'm from a neighboring city, as I think all of you know. But I bicycle through here, pretty close to the plant, daily to go to work. And I'd like to have cleaner air to breathe. So I'm requesting that you stay the course, consider things properly on the 6th, February 6th, expand the scope of the investigation, the explorations, into new sources of power for Glendale, since the old plants, obviously, are even worse than anything that could possibly be proposed now. And I'm sure then you'll do the fiscally sound and reasonable and responsible thing. We'll talk in more detail on February 6th. I just want to put my two cents in. Thank you.
Thank you. Just for the record, which neighboring city are you with?
Burbank.
Let the gentleman ask.
I'm sorry, Burbank. I apologize.
Thank you, sir. Alec Bartosoff, followed by Karo Awanesian.
Hello, my name is Alec Bartosoff. I don't have prepared comments. I just wanted to state that I oppose the expansion as it's proposed vehemently. I think that with the growing number of people that are concerned about this issue in this community, this is not a singular issue. This is about global warming. This is about climate change. This is about local air quality. And I want you to know that this is not an issue that people are going to disappear once you vote on this issue. I want to know why we aren't increasing incentives to install solar panels on residential units. I want to know where the electric car chargers are going to be in the city. I want to know where and how the city is working on incentives to make the city greener and a city of the future. I know that the city has approved their Greener Glendale Plan many, many years ago. It outlines very specifically things that the city can do as a municipality and things that the residents can do as a community. And being very much in tune with what the city is doing, I'm not seeing much action on that. So I challenge you to think beyond Grayson, think beyond turning this power plant into a renewable energy future source for this community, but also things we can do beyond that. So thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Karo Awanesian, followed by John Doyle.
Honorable Mayor, City Councilmember, I also want to mention a speedy recovery for the other council member who is not present, Reza Gajanian. He was also on board with putting a pause on this Grayson power expansion. I am representing Glendale Democratic Club. We have passed a resolution that we have sent it to each one of your members, City Councilmembers. We got three simple requests that put this study right now in pause, this new plan that you have in pause. Let's appoint an independent consultant to investigate more options and also appoint a citizen, independent citizen oversight committee to look, see what's happening. So, Charles Sway, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. John Doyle, followed by Candace Shin.
Hi, my name is John Doyle. I'm with Victory Energy. I was asked to come down here and kind of talk about solar and battery storage and kind of give my opinion on where the market is going. Right now, PG&E has stopped two gas power plants. The price of storage is coming down significantly. And I'm just kind of here to tell you that in 2025, there probably won't be any more new gas power plants because of the price of solar and storage has come down. I know that Glendale entered into a firming power PPA a while ago, and that had a solar element along with natural gas or gas on the edges. And you guys are looking for firm power. I actually worked on that a while ago, and about three years ago, and the price of batteries was so expensive to help firm the power that it just wouldn't work. Now, that was, the price was like $1,200. Now they're $400 per kilowatt hour, $400. In three to four years, it'll be $100 per kilowatt hour. So the price of storage is dropping significantly. And that'll allow for you to have solar and firm power. Because the problem with solar is that if there's a cloud that comes by, then you don't have the power that you need. And so storage, which is really, was really expensive, is expensive, but the price is coming down, will provide you with the firm energy that you need. Now, I know that Glendale wants, there's solar ramps up in the day, and storage will help smooth out and firm that power for cloud cover. But then you have the edges of the day from 7:00 a.m. to noon and towards the evening ramp. That storage, at this point, probably wouldn't be economical to provide firm power in a block throughout the day. But by 2022, it will be economical. So that's, that's kind of, that's it.
Thank you, sir. Candace Shin, followed by Zach Gershon. Candace Shin? Followed by Rachel Ridgeway.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council members. I'm new to the Glendale community. Moved here from New Jersey six months ago. Probably could have picked anywhere in Los Angeles County to live, but chose Glendale because of the great schools, the beautiful community, you know, the cleanliness of the town. You know, a power plant like this, right here in the city, I don't think I would have brought my wife and two children to this town had we known that. And I'm certainly not alone in that, right? It's undoubtedly a less desirable community if you allow this power plant project to go forward. What's the rationale for it? It's certainly not to create a more desirable community. It doesn't make a cleaner community. It's not cheaper. I mean, all of the studies coming out, everything you read, renewables plus storage is dropping at a rate that coal can't compete with, and soon, natural gas won't be able to compete with. So you're building something that's going to be antiquated in a short period of time. So it's not economical. And I think most importantly, the plan is completely antithetical to everything that the majority of Californians stand for, right? We're all here because we want to live in a progressive society. We want to live in a welcoming community. We want to lead the world with technology and ideas. This plan is antithetical to that. So let's, you know, a lot's changed since you all embarked on this. The technology has changed, the prices have changed. Let's just pause, review, make sure we're doing the right thing for the long term of this community. Thank you.
Rachel Ridgeway, followed by Charlotte Gilmore. Followed by Monica Campagni.
My name is Charlotte, and...
Tell them why you're here. Why are you here?
I'm here because my brother Finn has asthma. And I want clean air because if we don't have clean air, it'll be harder for my brother Finn to breathe.
Thank you. That's right. Thank you.
You're such a nice sister. Thanks for being here. Followed by Paul Berelsheimer. Followed by John Madden.
Hello, City Councilmembers and Mayor Capitan. Thank you very much for this opportunity to speak to you tonight about Grayson. I've spoken in front of you recently, and so I will just add to my personal plea from before that we pause the process. And thank you for the support that we heard in the last meeting. And I look forward to hopefully hearing that continue next time when you're considering this matter. Tonight, I just wanted to add these following comments. Please pause this process. Please hire an independent review by clean energy specialists who have no stake in this project. It is the only way we will truly know, number one, what our actual need is, and number two, what all of our clean energy options are. Having StanTech, Pace, and GWP do this research is impossible. They will never be able to give us a truly impartial review. They are not experts in this area, and they utterly failed to frame this issue in a way that sought to find every available alternative to fossil fuel. They had their chance, and they found only ways to poo-poo the possibilities of solar, battery storage, and other clean energy alternatives. Because the draft EIR overstated Glendale's energy need, all of the alternatives were improperly drawn. The entire approach was defeatist. Things are changing rapidly. It is true, batteries and solar pricing are following every day, and more and more large-scale utility projects are going on across our country. Yes, that is true, and it was true two months ago, when according to GWP's plan, there were no other alternatives than proposing this mega dinosaur of a gas factory that would theoretically, though I think not in reality, pay for it... theoretically, though I think not in reality, pay for itself by overproducing in efforts to sell dirty fuel at the cost of our planet and our Glendale citizens' health. And yet, I was able, my little self, to find examples all over the place on the internet about things changing and new possibilities. It just doesn't stack up that all of a sudden, GWP is feeling the heat from us Glendale residents and suddenly seeing the light. I'm sorry, but I don't trust their findings if they continue to be the oversight in this process. Give another method of finding an exciting solution to this problem a chance. Spend some more money. Take the time because we have it, and find the experts who can truly inform us of our options, please. Thank you, Mayor and Council, for your consideration, and I do hope that Mr. Abajani will, will recover soon. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Paul Berelsheimer, followed by John Madden, followed by Laura, Laura Hernandez.
Hello, I'm John Madden. I've been a Glendale citizen for over 20 years and a ratepayer. You know, I don't think anybody was, is surprised that for years, studies funded by Philip Morris and RJ Reynolds found no connection between smoking and cancer. And so, why would anyone be surprised that studies by Pace Global and StanTech, providers of energy, gas-burning generators and energy contractors, would find that the best solution for Glendale would be to build a power plant and have them contract and build it and, and supply the power? I mean...
Okay.
The studies...
Excuse me one second.
The study...
Um, we're trying to be respectful to all of you that you spent time and you're here. We appreciate you being here. We want you to be here. We want to hear from you. Please accept the same courtesy to the councilmembers here. We're running a meeting. Be cordial. I can ask the officer to remove people who are disruptive, but I don't want it to... Please refrain from clapping. There is no need for it. We will have so many meetings, several more meetings in the coming, coming weeks. So I want to keep this meeting in a civil, run this meeting in a civil manner. Please refrain from clapping. Thank you. Go ahead, sir. And add the time to, to the gentleman's time.
Obviously, a study conducted by such interested parties doesn't pass the smell test. And I don't think there's any way, frankly, to save that study. I think that it's time to really shelve it and start all over again. In addition, you know, even though the study started only a couple of years ago, the costs of renewables continue to fall. I know the cost of gas has gone down dramatically recently because of fracking, but I think the costs are much more, you know, volatile. I think that committing us to, to something for 30 years with a, you know, aging technology doesn't recognize that over those next 30 years, the, the abilities of renewables will continue to improve, and the costs of those will continue to fall. So we can, we can continue to have a more gradual approach where we would continue to adopt more renewables as the cost came in line and as the power needs continued to grow. I think that we haven't adequately looked at conservation, which is really the cheapest method. I think the concept of solar power rooftops in all the public spaces would not only generate power for the city, but on top of schools and everything else, would, would provide education alternatives for our children. And I think that the power plant expansion moves Glendale in the opposite direction of the state and the clean power mandates. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker is Laura Hernandez. Followed by Caitlin McCrow. Is Laura here? Caitlin? Monica Carlos?
Hi, thank you for hearing our comments again. We really appreciate you taking the time. I won't take up too much of your time today. I know there's a lot of people here speaking, but I did just want to point out and make sure that you all are aware of just the number of people that took the time to come here tonight. I have two kids at home. I haven't had any dinner. I'm not here for fun. We're here because this is important, and this means a lot to us, and we really want to make sure that you're hearing our viewpoint and our messages coming across. So I just want to quickly say two things. I'm not an expert in this, but there are people who are, and we would like to see an independent study conducted by people who do not have any financial stake in this project, who can tell us what the actual zero emissions and clean energy options are, and can give us, yeah, a true picture of what our alternatives are. And California is moving towards a zero emissions future, and Glendale can either be a part of the problem or a part of the solution. And this is my city. I'm a ratepayer. I'm also a resident. I breathe this air. I very much care about being part of the solution. So we're hoping that you do the right thing and put a pause on this expansion while you consider the zero emissions energy alternatives. And just if I could echo one other thing that a gentleman earlier said, that this expansion of the power plant makes Glendale a less desirable place to live. I don't like to say that, but I personally feel that it's also true. The number one cause that would get me to move out of this city and out of this region is air pollution, and it's definitely the top of my mind as a parent. Thank you.
Thank you. That was my last card for the...
That was no money.
Sorry?
That was no money.
Yes, the last person was money. What is your name?
Money, okay.
Yeah, okay. Come on up, please. Sorry.
Thank you, Ryan. Good evening.
Sorry about that.
It's okay. Usually, I do not like to speak in public, but this for me is really important, so I'm just going to make my best effort to refer myself to you. My kids are third generation of Glendale residents. We live less than 1.5 miles from Grayson. We're a bit two blocks above Keppel. Every morning, I'm still capable to open my window and see the Grayson. I can see the Autry, and I can still see Griffith Park. I will not like to change first, but most important, it's about the air that we're breathing. My, I have two children, and thank God, right now, they're not suffering from any respiratory problem. My younger one is on the autism spectrum, and I would like you to consider to not to add a respiratory problem in what already my kid is dealing with, and with every kid that is living on our neighborhoods. First and most important, our children. So from my heart, I would like to ask you to pass this expansion and think about your community. Thank you.
Next speaker is Emmy Griffith.
My name's Emmy, and I would like the air to stay clean, and I do not want the power plant to get bigger. If the power plant gets bigger, everything will go bad. The sky will turn bad. People can get sick and die.
Last speaker is Joanna Dorton.
Hi. I've never spoken before. It's really intimidating. I just wanted to come up here as a healthcare professional to kind of reiterate, I haven't heard any other healthcare professionals come up here and speak, but there is well-documented information about pollution and the correlation to poor out, poor health outcomes, increased incidence of asthma, increased rate of birth defects. I am a Utah native, grew up in Salt Lake City, and have lived in the LA and Glendale area for the past 10 years. I am well acquainted with inversion and pollution and how that has affected. And in Salt Lake, they now recommend that women do not get pregnant from November to February because pollution is so bad. If this plant expands, that pollution is going to go up, and just like others have echoed, the desirability of living here is going to go down. Home prices will go down. Everything will be affected. It's not just a short-term thing, it's a long-term thing. And, you know, we, Glendale does have an opportunity to be cutting edge, and it may seem scary to make those steps to be cutting edge because we are used to fossil fuels. We're, it's, it seems, and when something is comfortable, it's easy to just fall back on that. It's uncomfortable to do something new and cutting edge that maybe seem riskier, but with, I, I actually think that those things are attractive to a lot of people to, we moved into the Glendale area for the, the schools. If I knew that Glendale was on the cutting edge of green energy, that would be even more attractive to me. These things are, I, I feel like as a governing city, that would be important to me, to attract those types, to attract those forward-thinking types. To go back to healthcare, I mean, it's, my daughter has asthma. I have developed asthma in, as an adult, which used to be very rare. But as pollution has increased, it is becoming more common for adults to develop asthma, which, you know, is unheard of. I'm always concerned about my daughter's asthma. I do notice that, you know, around 2:00 or 3:00 AM, we both start coughing, whether that's pollution settling down because the air has cooled, or I don't know if there's exhaust systems that power plants are releasing their exhaust at those times. I don't know, but it is a concern to me. Until you have seen, I work on a pediatric ICU, and until you have seen a child with severe uncontrollable asthma die because they are put onto respiratory ECMO, which means their blood is taken out of their body and put through this machine, and it's only sustainable for two weeks, because if their body doesn't heal within those two weeks, it's, it's, it just doesn't function as well. Your body is the best machine for, you know, oxygenating your body. So until you have seen someone do that, I don't know if you can fully appreciate how severe asthma is. You know, a lot of people look at it and say, oh, you just need an inhaler. No, no, it is so crucial. And if we can prevent other children from developing that by reducing air pollution and increasing the health of the community, I think that's the right direction to go.
Thank you. And I have, with the records, record reflect, that I have 160 cards that is filled out by the residents, by our residents, and they're not, they don't wish to speak tonight, but for the record, I have them, and it's going to be part of our, our, our meeting tonight. So with that, I have no more cards. What is next, please?
I have a, I'm sorry, I have a comment. I just want to thank everyone for, for coming and, you know, spending all this time to express yourself on this very important issue. I was especially impressed by an unusual occurrence, which is folks coming here with their kids. We usually see kids only when we're giving out commendations or some team wins an award, but today, you've, you've, you know, come with families to remind us that this is a subject matter that impacts all of us, but our, our children in particular. Myself, a father of three Keppel kids and one tall kid, and that, obviously live in that area too. Anyway, you elect this, this council, the staff works for the council, and it's very important that you keep reminding us of how you feel on important issues, and you've done that today. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Any comments from my colleagues?
I just reiterate that thank you all for being here and taking the time to, to let us know how you feel. That's what's the important thing. Oh. Sorry, that's why I'm sitting back. You know, I just, I just want to say the same as Councilmember Sinanian. You know, one of the most important things, I think, for all of us that are on council is to hear from our residents, to hear what your issues are, what your concerns are, what your thoughts are. And I'm glad and proud, actually, that all of you are here tonight to speak up and to let us know your feelings. So just thank you. Thank you very much. And you know that we're taking all of this into consideration. I hope you realize that.
Okay. With that, what's next?
13 would be new business.
Do we have new business, Mr. Najarian?
We do.
Mr. Mayor, I move to authorize the city attorney to file a petition for writ of mandate challenging the Superior Court's denial of the city's motion for summary judgment in the matter of Avedyan versus City of Glendale, Los Angeles Superior Court, case number BC 623567.
Second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Agajanian? Devine?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Sinanian?
Yes.
Mayor Garpetian?
Yes.
Good afternoon, and welcome to the January 23rd meeting of the Glendale City Council. Maybe have a roll call, please.
Councilmember Agajanian? Devine?
Here.
Najarian?
Here.
Sinanian?
Here.
Mayor Garpetian?
Here.
Flag salute is...
Yes.
Councilmember Sinanian.
Thank you. Please put your hand over your heart. Ready, begin.